Call this meeting to order, three oh one. Maybe our city council workshop agenda. Uh, call this meeting to order. I see that Councilman Canal is not available. Uh, who wants to pray for us?
Glad to.
Captain Thompson, will you pray for us? Stand up, please.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, bless this council today as we go through the chores of the city of Odessa. Help us make good decisions for all the citizens. Help us identify the issues, take the priorities, protect our first responders, police and fire dispatchers, and all the people that work for the city. Let us all work in unison together with a sense and accomplishment of we can get it done. Be with all of us in your Son Jesus Christ, in His holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Steve.
Yep.
All right, let's start with the agenda of number three. Discuss providing an appropriation for a new municipal parking garage at OPD that received a prior bid award, Jeffrey.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. So, um, today we're gonna discuss this item a little bit. And this has come up before, so we had initially started out with the previous council discussing this. The previous police garage was structurally unsafe, so they found them all of that. And there was talk about possibly constructing a new garage, or resurfacing, or doing something that could sustain the police and maybe looking at additional parking for city staff or even for the public. So, when we first sent it out, uh, we had started reviewing the bid committee. Um, let me just skip ahead here. We, uh, we came back, um, again, there was discussion about looking at some other options, like automated garages or, or more competitors. So we made the design criteria a little bit more strict and came back again. Um, the bid, the initial, um, bid was awarded to WGI, but there was no contract entered. It was really just for the design plans, so we'll call that phase one. And then phase two would have been the construction, so obviously that would cost a lot more. So, um, we were not asked at that time to give a cost estimate or look into that. Police Department had no choice but to demolish the old one. They couldn't wait just due to the structural safety issue. So, now the question is, um, do we wanna move forward with that current bid, or do we wanna look at some other options? So I'm gonna go over those carefully and, um, with David and I both with some help with some consultants, uh, most of them that were on the original, with the original submission for the bid. So, uh, we were able to get some different estimates of options for you. So today it was really just to present options, it's just being a work session, and then you all can, um, either, you know, make a decision today, or contemplate, you know, maybe further after further review. It's, it's a lot, so we, we kept it really, um, short here and simple for you. Uh, even for us, there's a lot of, um, numbers, but again, consultants were very helpful. So, um, we had done a, a needs assessment originally last year. So, uh, the current need for the police is about a hundred and ten spaces. And then we all projected twenty to twenty-five percent increase over the next, um, twenty or thirty years, because we wouldn't wanna spend money on a parking garage and, you know, that's only'll last for five years. So we were looking in the long term. Municipal Court uses it a lot as well, um, as well as the, uh, employees at Municipal Plaza and, and the Fire Marshal's Office, which is all along, um, North Lee Street. So, the current need is, is roughly three hundred and twenty-two spaces. Again, most of the, um, parking is already there, it's outside, um, so the problem is that the, you know, people are parking in different parking lots, not in the same. So, some of that need has already been addressed already. Um, but then the future need, we, you know, again, taking a roughly twenty percent increase, you'd be up to, to four forty-six eventually. So, for now, the current parking lot, um, holds ninety-six parking spots, um, on the main level, and that's what's left. Uh, everything else has come down. Okay, so we talked about, um, this process. So, we looked at several different options, um, A, B, C, D, E, and F, looks like a lot, but it's not. So let's start with A. So this was the, um, in the grand scale of things, if, if we could have everything we wanted bells and whistles in the city, we would've, originally when the bid went out, it was for a five-story garage with a roof. Um, it would meet the parking demand in the future, about four hundred and forty-seven number. There'd be no need for any future expansion. Um, there'd even be some retail that would face, um, Third Street as well, um, so we could also get some tax money through that, uh, leasing fees. Um, projected costs for just the design, these are just the plans, would be, they, um, this was from, uh, WGI was one point two million. And then the total cost for everything, including construction, these over all the phases was, was twenty-three point two million. And so that's what it, it looks like there. You can see, um, five-story garage. This is like the, the ultimate package. If we go down to option B, we're looking at a, it's really a two-story garage. There's another half level, which would allow you to build up in the future. So if money was an issue and we decided we're only gonna build two levels, but allow a ramp to go up, um, possibly secure the police parking from other users, we could look at that. So this, this would cover the demand for the police, might add a little bit more for public as well, um, and also allow the future expansion. Uh, design again was roughly the same, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, and then the total cost has come down from, uh, that previous twenty-three down to fourteen, so it's almost half the amount, because it's half the size. So B two, Park Hill was, was kind enough to provide us with an alternative. They won the original bid as well, um, similar to WGI where they both do traditional garages. And for them, um, they had, this is actually not, oh, yeah, okay, it's on there. So, they were one million or designed a little more, and then the total cost was, um, eleven point five million. So that's a little less than the fourteen million that, um, that WGI had provided. Um, if they did a five-story, it would be nineteen point four. And then they also were, um, knowing kinda what we were looking for, they also did an estimate for resurfacing with canopy or shade structures, and then resurfacing only. So, that bid, we'll get to the next options in a minute, is probably the lowest out of everything. If, if they just resurfaced, we're looking at one point four. That's just for the paving and, and the fees for that. And then looking at C, D, and E, again, this is from WGI, so they could do, um, a one-story with a roof, and you'd be looking at five point two, um, million. The problem with that is it wouldn't be able to go up in the future. So, um, option D is just the resurfacing again, uh, and that would be two point two, so that's higher than what, um, the other firm had, um, provided. And again, whether, if the resurfacing would keep the ninety-six spaces, so that should accommodate the police needs at least, maybe not anyone else, but at least them for now. Uh, and then finally, option E, which was what if we did that, but then also added the canopies? So they had, uh, two different products. Um, and I believe this company has worked, um, not sure if it's our fire department, but they have worked on municipal projects before, VPS, and different, um, cities in Texas. And so, with the canopy covers, they had a heritage and a protector product. Basically, the heritage is where they cover the entire, um, parking lot, so you drive under it, it's just a some, it's basically a giant tent. Or the, the protector, which is just covering the parking spaces, but not the aisles in between. So that's why the heritage, um, is just a little bit less. So again, looks like a lot, but it's really not. Um, and then the final one was an automated, uh, company, which was also in the initial bid called, um, Autoparkit. We just wanted to bring this to your attention, just because the first time around, again, they, we, we were, um, asked for cost estimates at that time, so we wanted to at least see if this was something, you know, for you all to look at in the future. So if they were to do a, an automated garage, the first level, the police wouldn't have to worry about. What this does is it, it lifts up your car and it parks it for you. So the ground floor would be where the police is parking, so obviously in an emergency, we didn't want them stuck on the fifth floor, so they could get out. But this would allow additional parking for city staff, um, and maybe for the public as well. So that option for a two-story, so again, that's just really one story of the automated and the ground floor is, is just regular parking, nine point one million. And, uh, a three-story automated garage, which would be two upper floors, would be fourteen, um, seven. Now, this is if we were to, um, have, have to upfront the costs. They also provide a leasing option as well. Unfortunately, they weren't able to get us those numbers in time. We tried our best to keep calling them nicely, but, um, we don't have that yet. The advantage of the lease though, is that, uh, in the short run, it would be less than that, and you wouldn't have to, you know, go to a bond or get an upfront or, or appropriate any money, um, as long as you do have, you know, lease payments, um, every month. So, um, either option includes maintenance, they have twenty-four hour, um, monitoring from a different location, but, um, they have security as well for the police vehicles. And again, if we went with the other options, we could do that too, we just have to find a company on our own. But they would, um, essentially assemble all of it for us, get an easement over the property. That's what I explained it to Elizabeth and I. So that is something to, to look at, um, long-term. So that's the last option, F. There's also, oh yeah, and so at any time, if, um, if we were leasing it and deciding, you know, we don't wanna do this anymore, we could either buy it out, um, technically if we ever moved, you know, twenty years from now to a different site, City Hall, um, they could essentially unwrap everything and, and kick it off the site. So there's, there's many different options there, um, but again, then you're paying, either way you're paying, if you're paying leasing fee, it'll be cheaper upfront, or you're paying a long-term fee. So it gets down, so this is probably the best diagram here, just 'cause I know that was a lot. The option A is the bells and whistles, the five-story, that's the twenty-three point two. And again, why did we look into this option? Because we were kinda planning for the long-term, Odessa's growing, there's a lot of city staff, there's also a lot of public. If that area downtown becomes our, you know, expanded entertainment district, we're gonna have restaurants hopefully in the future, we're gonna have, um, you know, retail and stores and offices that we want downtown, and so that, that could be, um, again, down the road. And then it goes down to the, um, you know, the, the cheapest option, which would just be the, um, paving the surface, which is the one-story without a roof, and that was two point two there. Um, and again, um, the Park Hill one was down a little bit more, about one point six, one point eight. So, there are options, so obviously between, you know, one point eight million and twenty-three million is a huge gap. So, we really are, we're looking to you all, we were just here to present, help the Police Department, um, on the project management side of it. Chief's been great to work with everybody over there, so really just looking for, I guess your thoughts on how you wanna move forward with, uh, with the project, and, and these are just the, the options that we, we have available.
Can you go back to the need assessment slide?
Sure.
Jeff, I'm just speaking for myself. I, um, would it be possible for me to have you provide me, uh, a single page of all of these options and all this? So that I can have a side-by-side, so I can be really studying eventually what my decision or my proposal's gonna be?
Absolutely. After the meeting, uh, we can, uh, print copies and have them served to you, for sure.
I appreciate it.
Is there anything in their budget for this addition to, I mean, for this build? Is there anything in their budget? Or do we need to allocate all the money? That's what my question is.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let some others respond to that. What I, what I do know is when we went to council the first time, the discussion was, um, I think between two hundred and four hundred thousand for just the design, um, plans. That was something that was, uh, available and that they had voted on, but there was no further discussion after that. So the bigger fees, like all the construction costs and everything, hadn't been, um, hadn't been allocated at that point.
Just making sure we didn't have this in something.
Well, I guess that's one of my biggest questions. I know what I'd like to do, where are we gonna get, for example, twenty, twenty-three million, Richard? Was there any?
You'd have to issue that.
Issue a bond.
So, I would like to...
Thank you.
Let me ask a question before you start. Now, all this is brought in with the other council, right?
No.
When they started the previous garage talking.
Correct.
And it was just for PD at the time, right?
PD at, you shouldn't, you shouldn't separate PD and Municipal Court, because I think they're, they're both users of this facility.
So did Municipal Court use the garage we just tore down?
Yes.
Did they share it also?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
We do have parking across the street.
Yeah, we need to use it.
That parking, that parking needs to be used across the street.
It's nobody uses it.
It's just sitting there, nobody's using it.
That is available for juries.
Oh, okay.
So readily available?
Can you turn it on?
There we go. Um, readily available, we have six million dollars left in the twenty-nineteen bond fund that was specifically allocated for downtown projects. So that funding is available. Um, we also have about six point two from the twenty-nineteen bond that we've pulled from some projects that were left over, that Mr. Morton has not yet had the chance to kind of look at the projects and initiatives that we have going on with our departments and decide where that needs to be allocated. So safely, I would say we have readily available six million dollars. Unless Ms. Shaughnessy would like to use it for something else.
And that's what I'm, I'm here, I guess, to say that it's like, the six million was designed to, for the Market Street that we were supposed to be doing. That's what those funds were supposed to be going for. So if we're trying to, it, it depends on where you guys wanna go. If you see the value going more, or the need going right now towards that project, then yes, that's there. If you want to focus more on the entertainment district, then, so, or figure out how we do both.
Well, help me understand, and this may be, so in the CO, that money was designated to Parks, I believe? And then the...
Of that twenty-nineteen.
Correct.
The CO is what you're talking about.
Correct. The six million you're talking about, from the twenty-nineteen?
It was originally for downtown. There was also money designated for Parks, it was separate from this.
Originally, I think it was seven million dollars.
Seven million.
Yes.
And one million went to go to pay, uh...
Sports complex.
Yes, Brad sports.
But the money, we, we, Ters, whoever was in charge of it, uh, that hired KDC, that we were working on the Festival Street, that was designated to Parks, I believe, in the CO.
Yeah, I think specific, the language, in any debt instrument, you have to put language in there on what you're gonna spend the money on. And I believe this seven million was identified to be spent on downtown projects.
Yes, the council at that time allocated the seven specifically for downtown in the resolution, that's what it'll be.
Right, council allocated it, but the CO designated it to...
The CO, this was kind of our catch-all bond, so it can improve Parks, it could improve police facilities, streets, um, municipal facilities, anything. It was our catch-all bond.
Chief Kirk, can I call you to the podium?
I, no.
Yes, sir.
One of my discussions on this is, so we got that six million dollars, but if we put a, if we start the frontage building, if we put that in there, all that money coming in would help pay for this, uh, that we get off rental off of that, or leasing would come back to the city already, so we would partially pay for this parking garage over the years.
With revenue from the...
From renting out the store.
Right, storage, yeah. You already said, on the, Chief Three, now I'll call you up, hold that thought. I just wanna ask, from your perspective, and you're, I mean, you're downtown every day in, in that police department and Municipal Court. I'm seeing two different numbers here, current need and future need, they both have ones of three, ones of four, almost a five. If, if we do a one-story with a hundred spots, is that gonna be enough, or are we wasting our time and money?
Um, okay, so the current, what we have currently is about ninety-six, and we don't really have that currently, because we, we tore that, that one down, and even underneath that is really not very usable. Um, I think we have about ten cars parking there, it's really rough. So right now, we're dispersed all over downtown. So, I, I think the real need for the PD is about one sixty, um, and that's what, when we're, that's even future growth, um, that's the PD. Uh, when we started talking about this, um, you know, let's add in Municipal Court, I think that's another twenty-some odd, right?
Well, this one shows eighty-two in one oh three. Currently need eighty-two spots? Well, I guess twenty visitors, excuse me, twenty staff, sixty visitors.
Right. So right now, with the current facility, there's no visitors that park in that back parking lot. Everyone parks in the front. Um, so that would just be an add-on. So absolutely, that's, right now, there's, those people have not been displaced. Also, part of the plan, and I think you guys have already discussed it, is that parking lot to the south of, of Second Street there, it's, it's very underutilized, I think that's, uh, that could be used. I, I know there was a conversation about Second and Grant being a, a dangerous intersection, um, so we did this study on that. So in the last year, there's been sixteen accidents there. Only four were between, uh, working hours. None were fatalities, uh, there have been no, um, I, I can't remember the last time there was a fidelity, I asked my traffic sergeant, and we, we can't, it's been so long that we can't even, um, research that. Um, there have been no, um, pedestrian accidents there's, as, for as long as we can research. So, I, I, I still believe that is a viable option, that parking lot.
Okay. Just keep in mind though, everyone, that some near-future date, there's gonna be courthouse construction, and the first thing that's gonna go is their current parking lot, and when that goes, they're gonna need that parking lot.
Absolutely.
Because there's not gonna be a parking lot there. The courthouse is gonna stand for at least a year or two while they build a new one, so...
So I think from my perspective, what, what the police department needs, and when I, and I'll say, I'll include Municipal Court, and then hopefully I'm, I'm not speaking out of turn for lead, but, uh, enough for our employees. And that would be, I think about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety for the employees.
Future?
And that's for the future. I mean, that's for future growth also. I mean, if you have two hundred cops, uh, three hundred, I mean, a hundred, two hundred and fifty cops, please remember, they're, they work on rotation. So most of them aren't there at any general time. You, you probably have half that are there at any particular time.
But if this is for PD, why do we want visitors, visitors in the same garage as the PD cars? I don't, I don't think that...
For Municipal Court.
Well, yeah, they've got the courthouse too.
Okay, but it's saying visitors. That's a visitor.
That's because they have tickets going into their court day and stuff.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if it's PD, it need to be PD and Municipal Court that are gonna want to...
Well, but remember, there's that front parking lot that services all those visitors now.
And now, can we get handling in the design aspect of it? We have looked at it, we have different entrances, it's very exemplified, what would be PD, what would be open for the public? And it's, uh, you were there, so you were mentioning, as we're growing, you know, we wanna be proactive and have, be ready, uh, for that growth, because if we don't have parking, we have less people visiting here downtown.
All right, Chris.
I saw an intake on the side of your building. Are y'all still taking in prisoners or anything there?
No.
So everything's going to jailhouse?
Uh, for, I've been, I've worked for the PD for twenty-eight years, and we have never had a jail. The city has never operated the jail at the PD. I, I believe at one time it was rented out to a private corporation, but right now, we're actually using that for evidence storage, that area.
Do you still need that overhead, that hang on there?
I think if you take it down, yeah, I think you do. Um, just be, because we do store some things underneath there.
Okay.
And that is where we, um, bring prisoners into the intoxicilizer room for DWIs, right through that area. So it's nice to be able to close those.
So you are bringing in some people?
Right, but they, they, they come in, they take the, the tests, and then they are transported to the, to the jail. Yeah.
The only comment I'm gonna make is I, I think we don't wanna get over the top of our ski. I, I know it looks nice to think we can get some revenue off those, off of those, uh, retail spaces, but to me, that's getting way over our skis. Uh, we've got six million dollars to spend, and I think we just, we've got so many other needs. Parking for the police department is well-needed, but I think we get, we don't wanna get over our skis and spend, build this Taj Mahal just for parking. Uh, I know that the Marriott doesn't stay full anyway, and it's over there, and it's, you know, it's part of downtown. But I, you know, I wanna build a nice facility for the police department, but I don't wanna build a Taj Mahal. I'd rather keep it, keep it with two stories or three, whatever the best is. And the most, you know, it looks like to me, we, you got a lot of options, is keep it within budget, or I say budget within available cash, and, uh, we can't take on any debt right now. And so, there's not any, I mean, I don't even know why we would even think about that option. It's not, it's not something we can do. So I, I think I'd be more in favor of a two- or three-story, you know, nice facility to, to accommodate PD and Municipal Court. And, uh, if you wanna leave some parking on the ground floor for, or second floor for people coming to Municipal Court, you know, I could see that, but, uh, as far as any significant money being made out of retail, I think it'd be negligible. Besides that, and somebody's gotta run it, it's another employee, somebody's gotta keep it leased, and then somebody's gotta track the lessors, so, I don't know, it just seems like it's a lot of extra work for a little bit of money, you know, so I don't think you're gonna get that much. I don't know what downtown rents are. Do you?
Not per, not per square foot, no, but I know...
We don't know it?
I know that, uh, we have a, a fairly significant lack of leasable space.
It's pretty pricey, that's one of the issues that we have.
So at this price, ours has to be pricier.
And that would be the next thing, are we gonna buy parking for that, that too? So is that gonna be part of this space? Sorry.
And the retail is only...
The five-story, right?
Eight.
Yeah.
All the other ones don't.
Yeah, I, I know. That's, I guess that's what I'm saying, I just don't...
And then we did have one more, but we weren't able to get it on the slide, which was working with Joe Tucker in order to build it in-house, like start seeing it and then just getting gate to security. But we weren't, we just didn't have enough time to do it.
Right.
So, one more. Is foot traffic gonna bother you guys?
Excuse me?
Is foot traffic down there gonna bother you guys?
Well, I, I think if we have a fence around it and secure it that way, um, if you're talking about getting out, I, I think we can, we can surely design it where we can get out.
Okay, I just, if that's one of the options, I'm just asking if, if foot traffic's, you know, with people being down there and everybody else down there, is that gonna interfere with your operation?
Well, I think, again, you'd have to design it where, uh, you would segregate those people, that those people wouldn't have open access to any police vehicles or to any secured areas. You'd have to make sure that that happened.
And we already have it that way. We have two entrances for the last garage that was there, so you're not changing that.
Okay.
So, um, you know, the first thing, your comment makes me think of it, Baylor, they built a, a beautiful parking garage with steeples and everything, and everyone called it the Garage Mahal. So if we do build it, I would move, we'd call it that. But, um, on our master plan...
I'll second that.
Okay. On our master plan, I, I can't remember, I don't think we addressed much outside of that, um, corridor around the hotel. But I'd like to, you know, I've seen too many things get done for the sake of, well, we can't do the, the Ritz Carlton of it, but we don't wanna do the, the, the low end of it, so let's just do the, the middle thing, and then it turns out that that's just kinda in the way, that we shouldn't have done it. And, you know, had we had a bigger plan that looked at everything, all the pieces, it would've made more sense. And, so I'd kinda like to, to see, you know, what happens when the courthouse, the library, the, the future needs a Municipal Plaza that's right across the street, they need parking, I mean, what, what does that look like? I mean, this parking house is, looks at, at two departments, but if you look at what the city's using and needs in that spot right there, you know, could all that surface parking at, at, across from Municipal Plaza be moved and develop that into leasable space? So I'd, I'd rather see a, a master plan type thing of what we can do, rather than spending money to build a two-story thing that then we look back in five years and say, wow, I wish we hadn't have done that.
What is the, from a perspective of a timing, your needs, are we okay for a short term, or you need something done now? I need to sort of know the urgency or lack thereof.
Yeah, so what we have now is just, is really not working for us. Um, it's, it's almost impossible to park on that underneath spot that's just now dirt. I mean, we've driven on it enough where it's kind of washboarded out, it's very rough, um, there's still some rebar in there, um, there's some things like that, I'm very afraid of double puncture tires. And then other than that, we're scattered. Um, we, we have employees scattered all over downtown parking.
Let me ask you this, Richard, could we call it a paving company and pave it? Or they actually could utilize it? While we kinda, I, I feel like I'm torn, I don't know which one we, way we ought to[1781.88] Or we actually could utilize it while we kinda, I, I feel like I'm torn on which one we, way we ought to go, I, I don't even know.
And I, personally, I think that's, that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're working on, an in-house price for, what would it take just to pave it to provide initial parking now?
See, that's what I thought we were doing.
Yes, sir. And I, I like Mr. Stoker's idea of master planning the whole area. And that's something the mayor had asked us to get ready for the next, uh, work session for you guys, is let's revisit downtown and the ma- the current master plan, and talk about what we need to do for the future master plan. So that would be my recommendation, is just, let's get this thing paved and usable. And we, we're also aware of other properties that we may be able to lease from the hospital district, uh, if we paved it for additional parking, uh, on long-term lease. So I, I think in the short term, that would be the wisest thing in my, my view.
But if we're gonna do one of them, why wouldn't we do both, both lots? The one, the one behind the police department and the one across the street?
Yes, sir. And I don't know the shape of the one, are you talking on, across Grant? I mean, um-
Second Street.
Second Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I don't know the shape of that, if it needs paving or not.
It's got some kind of surface on it, but I can't-
It surfaced.
It, we probably need to-
Well, we can take a look at that too.
But I'm just saying, since we're doing one, it'd probably be just-
Yes, sir.
I mean, so-
Think we should.
That'll get us a good ways down the road where you're doing all this other, other planning. And what's the, the other question is, do you know what this county's gonna do for parking? I mean, y'all have met with them, I haven't, so I don't know.
They have plans for a large parking garage.
But on the east side of the-
Yeah.
The opposite side of what we're talking-
But which will handle some of the downtown traffic that we're talking about.
They're just focusing on them.
Just on them?
Yes.
And it's, uh, been discussed that we can utilize it for after-hours for weekends.
If they made one building, they're gonna continue to run the ANX.
They're gonna run the ANX, yeah.
Here's what I think, I mean, I don't know that we're, I think all of us are, it seems like when no one has a definitive idea or plan, I don't know why we don't get a bid from Joe and talk about next workshop. See if we can get you guys paved and at least park on it. And then look at the big picture. I'm like you, I don't wanna, we, we can't issue a bond, we won't be able to for at least a year.
Yeah, it'll buy us some time too. Get our house in order.
Jeff, I think we're one sh- one short, I think.
We're getting, uh, we're getting a time for, that's okay, I, I, I saw what I needed to see in here. Can we look at putting some kind of temporary covering for the police cars in case it hails? So we're not paying a bunch of damage?
So would that be one of the options with it? Um, so if we go back to-
Yeah, those covers.
Yeah, these covers. So just, so if we go with this one, it would, whatever the servicing would be, it would be six hundred and forty-six thousand.
It's by the shady spots?
Yeah. How much would it cost for us to repair cars?
Yeah.
A bunch.
Well, where are you going?
It doesn't prevent hail-
No, no, no. It does help.
It does help.
I worked at a car lot. That works. That keeps a lot of damage.
Well, let's do this.
See, cause you could do, so you could do two parking lots, Mayor. You could do, you could do two parking lots for two point eight, let's say, three million, and another million and a half of covers on both of them. And that would give you, that would give by you some time where you're getting this master plan done. And, and I bet you those covers could be pulled out and reused in other places. They wouldn't necessarily be permanent, I wouldn't think, maybe not. Maybe they would be. I have no idea.
There's just poles stuck up there.
That's what I know, that's what I'm sitting here thinking. So I, I mean, that's just my thought, that gives you a lot of parking down there.
You could work those poles into whatever you're designing too, so as support themes.
So there was another company that said, sorry, that can- So there's another company that we can lease, we're pretty much leasing the, the lot, and they build it, and then we rent it out from them. But they do all the cost for it, and they maintain it and everything. Um, where we wouldn't have to be putting up the money for it. But you get what you want, get the Taj Mahal if you wanted.
Garage Mahal.
And Garage Mahal. And then you just pay the monthly fee for that. Um, so, sorry. That was working. With that. Um, so, but, that, I just wanted to bring it up. That's another option. With that, you can open it up, and I'm gonna go to the videos. So this is just how the system works inside of the automated parking. And he, like he was mentioning, they have some of the locations that they are using as storage. You can actually use the base of storage. So you can actually, you're not utilizing them all the time. You can actually rent them to be put up for storage. Or we can put other stuff in there. Um, so it's just a automated system, and everything's done, I guess, automated. So everything's outside, and it's all inspected and everything like that. Um, they come once a month to do the maintenance of the buildings, just to make sure everything's op- is to par. Um, there's the bay going down, so you basically can put anything you want in them. You'll see the car that will come up right now.
So have these people seen how dusty it gets out here?
So there's different skins that you can put. One is one of the things that we were actually talking to them. Um, because they have one that it's in California, the one's in a fire attack, so they have to deal with that and how to get it back to working quickly and everything. So they do everything, they're prepared for what can, um, where comes the vehicle, sorry, it sticks forever. And then it just goes and shifts it, and depending on the time that you're gonna be there, that's where they end up parking it. Someone goes to the other one, to which is the skin of the building. So these, they're just screens that you can put on that wraps around the building. And then you can sell it as advertisement. So it helps bring in different kinds of revenue for it. So there's more to do with it if you choose to go in a different direction.
I don't know why, I just don't feel like that's a good idea. I'd be very sold on this automatic garage. I bet my own garage doors break so often, I have no trust in any of that.
That's the only thing I keep thinking about.
Call me crazy, but I'm not trusting.
Some of this dust, man, it, it could-
Yeah, I trust that.
I was gonna ask you, Chief, uh-
Yes, sir.
If we had a rainstorm tomorrow, that would be a very muddy situation for me.
Yeah, I don't think we could use that area at all.
Oh, yeah, that would be-
So the most recent discussion is, we need to pay you as soon as possible.
Uh, that would be appreciated.
That's the fa- that's the fastest, easiest solution, and we can afford that.
I think if, if we can have, uh, Joe bring us an estimate for that, and look at the other one just to see, I don't feel, it looks like it has asphalt on it to me, but I've never parked in it in a long time.
It, it does.
It might be able to be-
The prices-
It's usable right now, but nobody uses it.
Right. That's correct.
We might be able to-
Yeah, nobody uses it.
Yes, sir, sir.
A lot of cross-sections is paid. They might need some striping, but it could be used immediately.
That's what I think.
And, uh, yeah, I'd be glad to, to run some numbers on that. I'm getting that dirt section fixed.
Hopefully it'd be less than, than they identified in this study.
Right.
The cheapest one that we got, I think, was like one point four.
Yeah. So we'll have Joe run the numbers. Um, per Mayor's request, we wanna talk about downtown, uh, at next meeting anyway. This'll fit right in with that discussion.
I think it's perfect. We appreciate everyone for bringing it to us.
Street crossing question, though. Does the little button you push work to make the crosswalk? Okay.
I believe. Seems like-
If it's not, we can fix it after.
I haven't tried.
All right. Thanks to everyone for that, we appreciate it. It's a lot to, wanna make the right decision, and it just, I just think we need more time to think about this one. Uh, let's go to number four. Uh, Joe Schu, discuss approval of a professional service agreement with Kimberly Horn and Associates to assist in the development of an engineering design manual and revision of the city, the current city right-of-way ordinances for the Public Works Department.
Yes, sir, thank you. We've been working on this for some time, and we've had several meetings with consultants trying to work out scope. Uh, what we've worked out is we have two ordinances that we use every day. Our right-of-way ordinance, it was last revised in nineteen ninety-eight, and our standards and requirements ordinance is from two thousand three. Both of them have deficiencies that we wanna address. Uh, there's some additional requirements we need in there. Also, they've, uh, they're gonna look at all of our construction specification documents. Some, those are, um, a lot of references to standards and that don't even exist anymore. So, um, and requirements have changed. Um, I know the counties have gone to a, a thicker pavement section. We're looking at doing something like that. And, uh, also included in this scope is that they're gonna put together a actual design manual for us, which we don't have currently. We have a lot of pieces that we enforce and use, but this will put it all in one place, and it'll be updated. It's, uh, about an eighteen-month process, because what, what's also included is setting up an advisory committee. So we'll have local engineers, developers involved in this process. Uh, we'll have public meetings and get a lot of input to where when we finally roll it out, there won't be any surprises. And that, that's the whole scope of what we're trying to do. Uh, they've given us a proposal. Uh, it's basically three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And, uh, we've prepared professional services to move forward with that, and that's what we're here to talk about.
Does this say your budget?
It isn't budgeting. Gracious enough to allow me that money, so that's what we're wanting to spend it on.
Question about who would serve on the advisory committee?
That'll be selected by the city. Um, we'll get into that when the time comes, but we haven't made any selections at this point.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
This is just discussion, we'll bring it back for a vote in two weeks.
Perfect. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. We don't move a muscle. Because, I don't remember if I'll on the agenda is the capital improvement project update from the Public Works Department.
This is something, uh, Mr. Morton asked me to bring you. Oh, okay. There we go. And I wanted to go through a little bit of what we do as far as budgeting our projects. Um, first is our, our funding. May, we'll get into maintenance plan, rehabs, and also some new construction that we're talking about. What we typically have gotten budgeted in the last couple of years, um, is twelve, fifteen million dollars. This is used for our traffic signalization program, about a million roughly. As far as our annual maintenance, which is rejuven, uh, seal coat, and friction seal, we're spending three and a half, four million. You'll see, uh, rejuven come tonight. We've got that project ready to go, and I'll be bringing it to you tonight for award. So you'll, and the friction seal and seal coat, we're working on those plans, and we'll have those out for bid. I'll talk more about rejuven tonight when we come back. So the balance of that, we get into projects that we've identified and that need reconstruction. This map is, uh, roadways that have been identified. It's, uh, for our rejuven, seal coat, and friction seal programs. It's hard to read, I understand, but, uh, we concentrate rejuven mainly on fairly new roads. It's a, it's an oil base that actually goes into the new asphalt. Um, asphalt, of course, dries and as time goes by, UV rays are hard on it. These, oil kinda rejuvenates it and, and gives it a little longer life. It's used on residential streets. Uh, the friction seal is a, is similar to seal coat, which y'all are familiar with, the chip seal. Friction seal uses a smaller rock, and we use that quite a bit on, um, collectors, residential roads and collectors. It's not really suitable for arterios and above, but it's used quite a bit. And then seal coat, of course, is used for arterios as well as residentials. So that is kind of our seal, our maintenance program. All three of those products are pretty good maintenance products. As far as reconstruction, this is roads that we've identified. I mean, this is- Total here. It's, uh, all over town as far as our reconstruction. Some of these are done, you'll s- see, uh, streets in every district that we've identified. We've gone out and actually, um, scored these. That's something we recently did. I had a team of people drive every one of these and score them from one to ten to help us prioritize how we're going. In fact, I'll go to that sheet. This is a spreadsheet we put together basically on these. This is kinda how we track the roads that we need to work on. There's, uh, two hundred and seventy million dollars worth of work here. So it's obviously not gonna happen very quickly. But, uh, we have scored them. This year, we're looking at reconstruction of Dorado. I think you've heard that one. Fifty-second Street from Grandview to JBS is on, is budgeted this year. Twenty-third Street from Andrews Highway to Adams is budgeted this year. We're working with, uh, utilities on that one. They, they wanna do some sewer work before we get into that one. So that one could be delayed, but we sure don't wanna build a brand-new street on sewer that needs rebuilding. So we're working on that one. Um, Eighth and Dixie intersection is just an intersection in recompletion. We picked that one because it needs done, obviously, but also we have some impact fee money available that'll help us pay for that project. And French is also budgeted for this year. Uh, that's, uh, Drainage Street, Inverted Street, and the drainage is heating it up pretty bad. It's in pretty bad shape. This is five years out. We've kinda looked at next year, Trace Ramonis, the next phase of Fifty-second. Sixteenth Street is, uh, some other streets that we feel like the need is coming up on. And I won't say any of these streets, y'all are out driving streets as well as us. If you see something we need to look at, for sure, let me know. Cause this is a moving target. Like I say, this, the map is, changes as we find a new street. We'll put it on the map, we'll put a number on it, we'll score it, and we'll try to schedule it the best we can. Obviously, with fifteen million a year, that's, that's great, it helps, but we have to prioritize because we have, can't get to all of them. This map, uh, finally is based on growth. It's projects that we know need done. It's not really, um, based on age, it's based on more on growth, like Fifty-sixth Street. Councilman Thompson's been talking to me about that one a lot. Yukon Road- Yukon Road is on there. A lot of the future streets out on the edges of town that we know need done. Uh, this is another two hundred and seventy-two million dollars worth of projects that are out there. Some of them we'll have developer help with because there will be growth in that area and we can get some developer money on those. But, um, that's the quick and fast approach.
Well, none of your maps show nothing on the south. I don't see no south on nothing on your map.
There's Murphy Street.
So, hold on, let me finish.
Today, we're working on Crane.
You know, well, Crane had to be done. That's, I, I, I'm sick of hearing y'all talk about Crane. Crane, Crane, Crane. We need water on Crane. The whole city needed water. So that's why the water was done. Wasn't done because you just wanted to go over there. It was done because it needed to be done.
It needed to be done.
War your service trucks, go to South Dixie to get to the work, to the shop over there. There's nothing on them maps that's in District One on the south of my district.
Will it be happening?
Well, it's part of the city. So everybody in here needs to start looking at Odessa, Texas, and not just that northbound Odessa, Texas. Okay? Because people come out for that interstate to get to the northbound right now. And they go to it to go downtown. They don't go to one ninety-one to get downtown. They get off Grand View, they get off Dixie, and they can get off South Crane. So all I'm saying is, in the future, we need to start looking at those roads over there because they are terrible. And I'm also talking to ODC about Second Street. I don't know how they paved the west part of Business Twenty and they get to Grant, go two blocks, I mean, to, yeah, to Grant, and they stop. When you go east, that road is like, so we need, we, I, I don't want to hear it. There's no excuse. This is a city.
You need to hear, councilman.
This is a city.
That text dot road.
It, it doesn't matter.
It does matter.
And I'm talking to ODC. I said I talked to ODC and, and, uh, I'm also talking to the city. As a councilman, as the city, the city can go to the, to the, they got better pool than I do to go to the text dot and say, hey, look, y'all got the help of South. The road is no good for our people that's traveling on that road, for our citizens.
I've done that, councilman. I'm on that board.
So why, why?
I've done that and what got done and got done.
Why we didn't finish Second Street? What happened to that part of the east side of it?
Because that's all the money that they allocated for it.
That's all they gave us. Well, anyway, another subject, but anyway. We need to look at the south side, okay? And I'm not saying the south side, but we need to look at the roads going south. There's nothing on any of them maps, south of, south of University that we fixing.
Yes. Hello, sir. I'm, uh, Cameron Rodriguez. I'm the street superintendent.
Either what?
The street superintendent?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you noticed on the south, we cracked seal this year because we're getting ready for the following year, twenty twenty-six. We're gonna do, uh, District, I believe it's one and three.
You know, that, that seal coating, that is the bumpy stinking down.
No, 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 sir. It's gonna be friction seal, which is better than seal coat. It's thinner, looks better. The streets are gonna look nice.
And parts of Dixie and Grand View, if you hit the gutter, it's that thick coming off into the gutter.
And that's why, because we have.
That means it needs to be redug up and repaved.
Yes, sir, but for that, that'll be a major reconstruction.
Well, I'm just saying, in the future, we need to look at downtown from University to the interstate. Not just the south side, but we need to look at those roads.
But like I said, the following year, twenty twenty-six, you, you will see a lot of streets with friction seal. And it's gotta look good.
I'm coming soon. I'm gonna come get you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll, I'll be there.
And this, this depiction shows that, that twenty twenty-six, all that's going to be, is proposed friction seals on the south side.
Joe, how long have you been in this position of responsibility?
Uh, about a year now.
Sir?
About a year.
But I mean, how, for the city as a whole, how long you been with it?
I've been with the city about twelve years.
I just want to publicly thank you and Joseph Goff for being as responsive as you have for the things that I've called to y'all's attention. Uh, you guys have a tough job to, to do and, uh, I'm grateful for what y'all have done. But I'm certainly in agreeing with Mitchell, uh, Councilman Mitchell, that, you know, we start, and you've already answered that question, that twenty twenty-six, you have lots of south side. Um, and I too was educated on certain, uh, improvements that were being made. Were not city roads. They were state text dot, I think you called it. I did not know the difference. As far as I'm concerned, if it's, I'm driving in, on that street, it's city, but nope.
Yeah. There's, most people aren't gonna know the difference.
Right.
You're right.
But again, I just wanted to thank you.
I get this kind of response every time that, just by mentioning something.
But we can't spend, spend city money on their roads and there's no need.
Again, I just wanted to compliment you and thank you all for the work you guys do. Do your best you can.
I have a quick question. I know one of them, I saw, um, signal upgrades and I know we had, that's one of my favorite things. But, uh, so when y'all are planning that, is that, what are you upgrading to? Is that?
We have a project right now that it's, uh, it's a grant money. We applied for a grant to upgrade signals on Grand View. And what it's doing is adding flash and yellow arrows all the way up and down Grand View.
Okay.
And we've applied for a second grant, which would do the same thing on West County Road. And the flash and yellow, it takes a little money because you have to redo all the wiring, add heads. But, um, that's a text dot safety grant. And we, we're able to get it on Grand View and hopefully can continue that. That money's supposed, that project's supposed to let in July. So this fall, we should see some of that happening. And there's a little bit of money here that we had to put into, the contribute. I think the design was on us, but the bulk of it's text dot money, so it's a good project.
And in that regard, Mary, just so the rest of the council knows, we've asked Cameron Walker, who's the chairman of, or the director of MPO, to make a presentation to this council. Uh, we were hoping to do it today since Joe was on the agenda anyway, but it looks like it'll be next council meeting. So he can go over with you guys and you guys can see what the hell text dot does and where they work and where we work, where we can't work, and, and what the process is now. The next one everybody's gonna gripe about is up on one ninety-one and, and Foddy Road, coming off of one ninety-one because you're gonna get there and underpass is gonna be a four-way stop. We got no control over it. It's, it's, the pedestals are there, the wiring's there, but that's a text dot stoplight on both sides. And that's, that'll go from Yukon under there to, uh, Bass Pro Shops. Uh, I've already put a request in and I've already talked to Cameron about it, but just so you people, so everybody knows, that's not us. That's, that's text dot again. So it's gonna be kind of a nightmare up and down the service roads if they start off with a stop sign, a four-way stop. And I've asked him not to do that because nobody will be able to get anywhere. So, anyway, but he's gonna make that presentation next week and maybe that'll help all y'all understand.
And councilman, if there's certain streets that you see, just point them out to us.
I'm just speaking up for my district. That's all I'm doing.
I, I'm going.
The people don't like to speak it up. Now, I do want to ask you about the light on Grand View. Did we decide who, who runs those two lights that's going up under the bridge?
Under the bridge?
That's in the median?
Under the bridge?
Well, it's, it's one on the north and one on the south. Remember we discussed that?
Yeah, not the tall one.
Right there, it's one in each median. One on the north side of the bridge and one on the south side of the bridge. There's two lights on each pole.
If they're in the bridge, we've taken care of those. The two, the real tall ones that go way up?
Yeah.
We believe those are text dot?
Yes. Those are, that's why we can't get them fixed.
And we're, we're trying to work.
Because without, without Unco, they had them.
No, no. We're trying to work with text dot.
Okay. All right.
Joe, you mentioned something about grants. I, I didn't, and obviously, we have five hundred million dollars. We can fix everything. At least we could get a project started. We don't. Um, is there any federal, state money to build roads that we know about?
I do not. I'm not a grant writer, but.
All right. But I wonder if you knew of any, we could hire a grant writer if there's actual grants available.
Yes. Uh, off the top of my head, I do not know.
So there's a lot of, well.
The grants are out there. I'm sure, and we talk, we get grants from MPO all the time, but you have, you'd have to have a grant writer on staff. We, we don't have that, which is, which is something we need desperately.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, but, yeah. That's, we need to, that's a position I believe we're, we're darn need of.
And I'm not fussing at you. I'm just saying, nobody spoke up for District One the last eight years. Okay? So I'm not fussing at you. I'm just, I'm out of bart though, so be aware.
I'm all right with that.
So something, Cal, along that, something we had visited about and we're trying to kind of bird dog down, uh, a, a group that does grants. And one of the ones I had a conversation with does CDBG. I mean, they started with CDBG funding and they have since grown into lots of other things. Uh, they're on the economic development side. So, uh, visited with them through Tracy and Tom Mansky. And there's, you know, infrastructure dollars, I mean, even down to rebuilding the sewer plant. So there are grant dollars out there for everything and we just have to find the right folks to plug into it.
That seems good. Water issues, road issues. We have a lot of needs and honestly, we don't have half a billion dollars or a billion to, uh, to find, so. Okay. Joe, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Number six on the agenda is a present and discuss City of Odessa Centennial Celebration. Norma?
Yes, may I have a, I'm gonna step down here and I'm gonna designate the temporary city secretary. I can take minutes, so we'll see how that turns out for the minute sections. We'll see how that turns out.
I suggest you delegate it, counselor.
I probably shouldn't do it. Mayor, council, thank you. So City of Odessa countdown to one hundred years. This is, we have a countdown clock. And let me explain a little bit. Countdown to Centennial Celebration. The City of Odessa is gonna be incorporated, was incorporated in April nineteen twenty-seven. And so in a hundred years, it'll be April nineteenth, twenty twenty-seven. So what, what I wanted to do is just have a countdown. It'll be fun, lots of excitement for this celebration. Centennial Celebration, uh, we want to present to you a vision for the City of Odessa Centennial Celebration, where we celebrate a hundred years of achievements, history, and the future of the cities and the citizens. The Centennial Milestone is a testament of a, of the vision, perseverance, and contributions of all those leaders, citizens who come before us, paving the way for our future generations to come. Does that look familiar? This is the first city hall and of course, we have our current building, where we started and where we are today. This cele, this celebration would be about a reflecting our past, living in the present, and propelling us into the future. Purpose and vision. We embark on a remarkable journey as we celebrate a hundred years of dedication, growth, and achievement. As we honor our past, we also look forward to fulfilling with progress and continued success. Together, we have a vision to celebrate a century of excellence and the promise of a brighter tomorrow, to celebrate the city's achievements and accomplishments of all segments of the community and citizens. We want to showcase our past and present, where we've been and where, how Odessa has evolved, to recognize the city's milestones and events. The vision to have a year-long celebration leading up to the finale on April sixteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Beginning April twenty twenty-six, leading up to April twenty twenty-seven. We want to engage civic organizations, schools, hospitals, colleges, universities, businesses to come together and celebrate by having an event celebrated each month. And hopefully, the groups can, uh, be hosted by one of those monthly events. Again, these are ideas. To, how we came about this, we have a committee. And at this time, I didn't realize that board was gonna block the committee. So if y'all don't mind standing so council can see y'all, I want to introduce the committee. Uh, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the driving force of this once-in-a-lifetime project, the Centennial Celebration Committee. Each person brings unique skills and talents, and y'all please stand. Kevin Chance, I don't believe he's here. He is a police department lieutenant. He brings a steadfast presence and will be an asset in utilizing his knowledge and expertise with events. Stephanie Garay, Deputy City Secretary. She provides, uh, the details and recording, our ideas and thoughts, takes the lead in organization and keeps clarity of all our brainstorming ideas. Daniel Gutierrez, Recreation Superintendent. He came to the first meeting recently and hit the ground running. He has an exceptional experience in hosting events and we are fortunate to have his skills. Laura Martz, Discover Odessa Director, who specializes bringing in tourists to our beloved city. Her expertise and knowledge of events is showcased through her awesome talents. Laura Potter, Senior Admin to Fire Rescue. She possesses a passion of vision in reaching for the stars. You should see some of her ideas. Oh, my gosh, it's over the top. She presents amazing ideas and she certainly sets the bar high. Marissa Rodriguez, Director of Purchasing. Marissa has a detailed oriented set that does not have a stone, leave a stone unturned. She also has creative ideas that most definitely will showcase the celebration. John Rogers, Interim Director of Parks and Recreation. John has the can-do spirit that when we ask of him, he will give you an answer that it can be done. He is a vital member for the, for the recreation activities. We will also have a city manager's represent, representative. And also, we ask that a member from the city council join our committee. We do ask that. We do meet monthly, uh, and myself as well. So during this time, the committee has brainstormed. We've discussed ideas, activities, and planning the, executing the celebration. Again, these are all brainstorming. Nothing has been said. We wanted to come before council to be sure if you would like for us to proceed, not to proceed, change, what, we want to get your, your thoughts and ideas. So the committee came together with a theme. We discussed and we wanted a, a theme and a tagline for this celebration. After many discussions, changes, and tweaks, the committee agreed to the theme, "A Century of Community Honoring Our Journey." The tagline, "Cheers to a Hundred Years." We will center the events with a theme and it will encompass our journey. The tagline will be used as a catch, as a catchphrase that will be used in marketing, advertising, and to identify the hundred years in creating a lasting impression. It'll be used on press releases, memorabilia, and other items and events. Here we go. Here's the fun part. Centennial logo. So, uh, the committee also wanted to have a logo with this. Artist Celeste Canero, she is a U.S. military injured, disabled veteran. She was unable to be here today. She is a community leader and volunteer and is an upcoming music artist and composer. Celeste has donated her time and talent, uh, of artwork and is a, it was a voluntary contribution to the City of Odessa. She has provided an art, uh, artwork release to be used for the City of Odessa's celebration. And we've already had Dan review the release and he has approved it. Uh, the committee did provide suggestions and, uh, we want, that we wanted to incorporate and build on this milestone celebration. So after several proofs, edits, the committee finally approved the Hundred Years logo and we would like to unveil that today. So, uh, John will help us unveil it and Laura will be, will explain to you the logo. And here we go.
Oh, wow.
Take it away, Laura.
Thank you, guys, and I would like to add, Norma has been our fearless leader. She is absolutely a spearhead keeping us going. She keeps us organized, in line, has great ideas, and organizes presentation for us. We're very glad to have, be on this team with her. So we did, uh, meet with Celeste multiple times. She brought a great first draft to us and then we, um, had lots of discussion. So the logo features iconic elements like the cowboy hat, the pump jack, sunset, prickly pear cactus, and my favorite, Eric of the Piedmont, but that's the tumbleweed. All of these represent our rich West Texas culture. Each element reflects a part of our identity and heritage. Each element reflects a part of our identity and heritage, capturing the essence of Odessa. The colors were chosen with purpose, we've got some gold for the 100 years, and of course, our orange and yellow for our beautiful sunsets, even the green in our cactus to symbolize the life and resilience in West Texas. We hope that the logo itself embodies a sense of pride and nostalgia, celebrating our community's journey over the past century. We also really love just kind of this element by itself, our hope is that we can pull a few things out, maybe even just the cheers to 100 years as we put it on lots of different items. The, I think at the end, maybe you'll be able to see a couple of different ways that the logo can be used. So there's lots of different elements we can pull out to do what we hope is a lot of fun days with it.
Wow.
Thank you, yes. Community involvement, we want to invite volunteers, sponsors, and contributors from the local businesses and organizations to help these events memorable. To reiterate, the committee wants to incorporate this as an inclusive celebration because we've all played a major role in making Odessa of what it is today. We want civic groups, businesses, schools, nonprofits, organizations, interested individuals to participate. And we envision a subcommittee to plan and organize the monthly events and activities. Quick little schedule, just a little highlight, we were incorporated in 1927. We have the history to tell from 1927 to the present. In May of 2024, that's when the committee first met, and we met monthly except during the holiday months. And the meetings were just brainstorming the logo, the tagline, lots of brainstorming ideas. March 25, coming to council to see if we have council's blessing, if we want to move forward, if any thoughts, suggestions, ideas. Schedule, August and September of this year, we want to talk to local clubs and organizations to personally invite them to a meet and greet. In October, we want to host a meet and greet where we have a reception to lay out and let them know what we want to do in celebrations, and we want to ask the organizations for their support in partaking in this event. We would like for them to, we were going to ask for them to sign up for an activity and this will be an opportunity to sign up. It is possible that their event may be incorporated with some event that they already do, so that would be part of it, we can incorporate that. And the group would be responsible for putting the event together. We do, are making a sponsorship packet that is in the works and we're working on that as we speak. November 2025 to March 2026, we will continue with the visits. April 2026, kickoff celebrations, that will, that's where we'll kick off our first event. And May 26 through March 27 will be the monthly events. We want to have a finale birthday celebration. Our idea is to have a three-day celebration and it would make, we were talking about maybe right out here at city hall where we can have it in the parking lot and maybe utilize this Seventh Street and have different activities such as concert, taste of Odessa, barbecue cook-off, food trucks, family incorporated events where we can all enjoy and share. Within the year, we want to be able to incorporate and highlight different, different things such as major developments, honor achievements and contributions, have special guests and keynote speakers as part of the annual event. Also, we also want to have games and sporting events that will encompass, of course, the youth and the adult. We, I think we thought about pickleball, Friday Night Likes game, Centennial Family Fun Day, these are just a couple of items, just to name a few. Again, these are all brainstorming ideas and we're still in the works with, with these Legacy projects for future generations, as part of the celebration, the committee also discussed about leaving a footprint of this momentous occasion. Brainstorming ideas are in the works, nothing definite, but we do want to leave something memorable, and we did discuss a time capsule. Media and publicity, we want to build awareness and create a positive vibe to provoke our Centennial Celebration. Types of publicity is through hashtags, challenges, countdown posts, press releases, videos, and community leaders, just to name a few. And we have a fantastic communication staff that will help us execute this plan. Momentos and memorabilia, the committee wishes to create a remembrance of this significant milestone. Ideas are logo, coins, glassware, cowboy hat, and maybe even a cigar to celebrate. The Centennial Celebration creates unique and memorable memorabilia for fundraising and event mementos as it is a great way to engage everybody in the community. Fundraising, I think this is going one at a time. Fundraising will be, of course, an integral component of this celebration. Funds are needed for the events and that, it could be raised from the commemorative items, hosting the large events, and of course, our finale celebrations. We thought about maybe a dinner, an auction, fundraising drive, and a fun one, a fun run walk, social media challenges, that would be fun if that went viral within the city. Mayor, you can head that up. And of course, Centennial Merchandise Sale. We ask for council support in moving forward with this celebration and ask for a council representative to join our committee. We are excited to kick off this incredible celebration. Up to this point, it has been all brainstorming ideas from the committee. Continued updates will be provided as dates and events are locked in if the council has consensus in moving forward. And I want to express my gratitude to all the committee members who have come in with strong ideas, passion, and enthusiasm, and thank you to Celeste for her donating of the logo. And we're here to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I did not know this committee existed, and I am just sitting here with a lot of pride acknowledging what you presented and those of you that have been involved, thank you so much. I would like to nominate as our city council representative, Mr. Steve Thompson, and I'm going to tell you why. I'm going to tell you why.
So Eddie, can you add me more?
First of all, first of all, he was born and raised here in Odessa, and he has been here in Odessa for 77 of those 100 years. I think he has a lot of historical knowledge and he's very well-connected to a lot of the individuals in this community that are movers and shakers, that could help this committee even make this event even that much better. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to nominate that Mr. Steve Thompson be the city council representative and Stevie Better accept. Because I know, I know the Godfather, I know the Godfather, and that's all I'm going to say.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Norma and the entire committee. I do think this is very impressive. I appreciate your time, your energy, everything that's gone into it today. I think I speak for the entire council when I say that, that we fully support this project. I'm not sure we have the ability to vote, but I think by acclamation, we can say Steve's the guy. Mr. Simple consensus. Yeah, so.
Sure appreciate that.
Yeah, you are the oldest, so. No, no. No, he's the oldest native born Odessa.
Oh, okay, I'm glad you cleared that up.
Who's oldest?
He's come by here.
Way to go. Alright, so, I think we have a committee, we have a representative of the, of the council, I think Richard can point someone of his choosing, and we can move forward. I think what, all you do is come to us and ask what can we do to help you, okay? I don't know if we need some seed money or something, we need to find that maybe, but that's for another time for another discussion.
Thank you, Richard.
How many seats you gonna put in? How many heads you gonna put in beds?
That's what we're working on, we did have talked about that, we want to bring in events where it's like a two-dayer, where it would qualify for the heads of beds. Yes, that, that's already on our discussion plate.
So, I have a, I would like to volunteer for the cowboy hat deal. I would like to go to the western stores here and get them to participate in getting somebody, one of their manufacturers to make the hat with the 1927 in it, whether it's on the front or stamped into the hat somewhere, that'll be y'all's decision.
Be great. Awesome.
So that, that's a big part to me, that's a big part of.
It's huge.
Of Texas to me. That's why I came here, because y'all get to wear cowboy hats and they were making fun of me in Alabama for my.
Well, a former voter can certainly get that done, so we'll, we'll figure out a way to put Chris in charge of that. What do y'all need from us, Norma?
Just your support, make sure if, if any of the council members, if y'all are good with it, each of the members, y'all okay for us to move forward with it?
Gentlemen, any questions or, I think we're all excited about it.
Okay, great.
Beautiful. Just tell us what you need from us and we'll be glad, we'll do the best we can, how's that?
Thank you, we appreciate it and we'll continue providing updates. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
I'll give you one project to start with, real quick. You have a bunch of pictures in the archives, don't you?
I do, yes.
Okay, you might get John to help you do this, I'll put the B on John. But just so y'all know, in 1927, there was a nine-hole golf course at the corner of Dixie and, no, Eighth Street and, what am I trying to say? Eighth Street.
We weren't born yet, we wouldn't know.
I know, but I do know, it was, it was the Eighth Street and Dixie's where it was. And so, there was a nine-hole golf.
East County Road.
Yeah, East County Road.
That's what we call it.
Well, yeah, East County Road, yeah. So the God, the Godfather's father was the.
Yeah.
Golf professional there. So, anyway, there's, there's got to be a picture somewhere of that, so if we got pictures in an archive, I'd like to try to find it.
I wonder if the country club might have pictures of them.
I don't, I don't know. I've got to ask Bro, he's, his dad, his dad built that golf course, so. I'll see what Bro's got, but.
The only thing missing, and I'm not being critical, is a jackrabbit. But anyway, I understand Jay Hendrick's grandmother was, has a picture, or Jay has a picture of his grandmother roping the first jackrabbit.
I have a drawing where there, a lady's roping it, I don't know if it's one in the same. Yeah, I do have that, yes.
That's Jay's great grandmother.
And by the way, in case you don't know, in baseball, if you have a 333 batting average, you're pretty darn good. Well, that lady just presented this presentation, has been with this, this city for 333, maybe 34 years, so you've been here a third of the 100 years and we thank you for everything, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Way to go. Yep.
Well, we, and just so.
She's only 39, you know.
Start with you at six, huh?
Yeah.
Again, thanks for everyone that's contributed so far, for everyone that will contribute and help. We give us, you have our thanks and appreciation and we are so excited about, look forward to, and whatever we can do to help, please let us know.
Thank you, Council.
Alright, thank you. Hi, gentlemen. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion move.
Motion by, second by Councilman, hang on, favor say aye.